All right, we'll start the regular meeting for Tuesday, December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. This is the regular meeting of the Roxbury Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission for the month of December. I'll call it order. We'll start with Rob Horgan. You here?
Rob Horgan.
Andrew Wood.
John Smollega.
Andy Engel.
Andrew Wood.
Sue here.
I don't see Sue logged on yet.
Anybody else on the commission on?
John Smollega.
Right, I got you, Andy, Rob.
Russ, it's Drew Wood. I'm on the phone, not on Zoom.
Okay. All right, so we have a quorum. I will seat Drew for Sue. Okay? Hopefully Sue will come on, but if not, we do have a quorum. Who am I missing? Me, Rob, Andy, Sue? Now, we're all here except for Sue, okay? Approval of minutes of special meeting of November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. Do I have approval? Do I have a motion to approve?
I motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Russ, I'll abstain. I wasn't part of that one.
Okay. I?
I.
Hi.
Okay. Approval of the minutes of the public hearing from November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty. John will abstain because he stepped off for that. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Russ, this is true. I do have a couple of points. In the references, you had questioned Gail McTaggart on when the hearing for the public deadline? And she had replied that it is in January, and I thought we had a specific day rather than just in January. And I wonder if that's, if we do have that, if it should be included in the minutes. Just because it's the deadline, you know, and there's a thirty days.
But that's moot moot now because that application's been withdrawn.
Okay, that's fine. The other question I had, and this one may also be moot, was a neighbor to parcel B, Suzanne Corner, said she had not received notice, and Karen Eddie was gonna check on that to, you know, verify.
Good point. Karen did check on that. She did receive notice. She did sign the mailing and it was returned. So she did receive notice. But make it clear, that wasn't why the application was withdrawn because of an administrative error. The problem was, yeah, the problem was the public notice did not mention that another parcel not related to the six lot subdivision was going to be used for stormwater control. So that's why. But Suzanne was notified of the of the public hearing. Anything else? With that, I look for a motion to approve the minutes from the public hearing.
I so move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Old business, daily one-thirty Toford Road, a pool. Who went and looked?
I thought they were supposed to submit some documentation about the distance between the
The pads and the pump.
Yes, the pump and the wetlands.
Yep. Did somebody go look at this? No?
Not since last time, but as I said, I thought they were supposed to submit some documentation, Russ.
Julie is so awesome. She is looking at that right now. What do the minutes say? That we just approved?
Julie, you're on mute.
You're on mute, Julie.
There we go. They were not at the last meeting and you requested that they be here, and I believe Sam Saban is present.
He is here. Sam, what's up?
Hi, Russ.
Hi, Sam.
For the record, Sam Saban, representing Tim Daly. And I had followed up. I, for the record, I wasn't aware that you guys had the regular, had moved up the regular meeting last month. I didn't check the schedule until it was already changed and you were using, doing the Woods project, but but beyond that, I, I'd asked what? Provide those now or follow up?
Go ahead.
So you were just looking for the the distance from the filter pad to the wetlands?
Yes.
Okay. So that would be, sorry, bear with me. Believe it was thirty feet is what is shown on the plans there.
Okay.
This is Drew, Russ. It says twenty-five on the pad, but I think Rob had raised this due to some problem. I don't know if you can clarify. I thought there was, go ahead.
I just asked if, you know, that, because no one had seen that, that equipment that close to the wetlands, so I just brought it up. And I think, Russ, you said that it has to be a minimum of fifty feet from a wetland.
Under, under DEP permit for discharge of filter water, that's correct.
Got it. Okay.
And under DEP, that's a general permit. You don't have to apply. It's a general permit that applies to all pools. You have to be fifty feet away from a wetland to discharge the filter water when you backwash or?
Got it. So that's the case. We gotta be, we have to be down gradient from the water's edge. So if that's the case, we'll have to move that to the other side of what is labeled as that screen porch beyond that apple tree, which shouldn't be a problem because that's all, it's all pretty much down gradient from, from there. So we can move that just to the other side of the house there.
All right, why don't you do that? Show it on a plan and we'll see you next meeting in January.
Okay.
Back to the agenda.
Let's see. Trying a new kind of way to share tonight to make it more efficient. Sorry.
You're doing a great job.
There's that.
Okay, we'll go on to new business. Sweeney, twenty-seven Willow Brooks, single family dwelling. Is John Cody on this call? Mr. Cody, there he is. Kay Cody. Hi, John.
There you go, unmuted. Hey, Russ, how you doing?
Good. John asked me, they got this approved in two thousand and seven and they wanted to go ahead and put the foundation in. You know, thirteen years later. And I said that the permit has expired. They need to reapply. Doesn't matter. That there were no wetlands and right, John? It was non-regulated. There's no wetlands.
Well, there seems to be some confusion with that because there's two lots that sister each other there. Twenty-five and twenty-seven. This lot, the particular lot we're talking about here is the one with the horse barn on it. There, they had, well, it was submitted back in oh-seven, had a proposed house on it. But there was no, no definition or no size, no limits or anything of the proposal. It just said the proposed spot. So this is basically a brand new application for that house.
All right, who's here to present that? Somebody's on mute. William? You're on mute.
It should be Cole. The Sweeney's on it.
Hello?
Hello?
Hey, it's Brian. How are you?
Oh, Brian.
Yeah, I did a site plan for this for the barn.
William? He's showing up as some other guy.
I, I did a, I did a site plan showing the, the new house that's proposed. Yeah, it's a picture of it right there.
Okay.
So the houses is actually, they designed the house with all the jigs and jogs and all that stuff. So they got the plans finished. Before it was like just a rectangle that we had shown, but they wanted to build, but they weren't sure exactly what it was going to be. So they finalized the plans. I updated the site plan to show the exact footprint. It's off to the side of the barn where the rectangle was before. The house is two hundred and twenty feet away from wetlands. And the limited disturbance is a hundred and fifty-four feet away from wetlands. It's in a pretty small work zone. I've got a stockpile area for soil next to the driveway. Driveway's just kind of branching off the existing barn driveway. The roof drainage is tied into the big system for the barn. Originally kind of oversized that figuring both the barn and house would be tied into that. That system is five hundred and eighty-eight linear feet of LTAC contactor one hundreds. It's a, it's a giant system for the barn and also for the house roof drainage, which has worked very well for, for the barn over the years. So we're just tying into that same system for the roof drains for the house. So it's a pretty safe location. It's a, it's out of regulated area in terms of a limited disturbance.
And it's flat, right, Brian?
Well, it's gently sloping. It's not dead flat, but it's gently sloping down the hill. We've got some sill fenced along the bottom part of the excavation area below the septic. So I think it's, it's a pretty straightforward application and plan.
Okay, anybody on the commission have any questions, comments, concerns? Looks pretty straightforward. Nobody? Is anybody on mute? I know this COVID thing. I can't wait till it's over. Although I do like the meetings on Zoom. Don't have to drive anywhere. So does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this as a non-regulated activity.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you, Brian.
Hey, thanks very much.
So next? What's next? I know I should have my piece of paper here, but I Caranta, One Judge Bridge, growing and harvesting crops. Joe, are you here? What Joe is asking for is an agricultural exemption. Joe has been growing crops to help people with, with the COVID stuff, feeding people, doing food share, doing things like that. So he decided that he would like to start doing that on his property. And I told him that agriculture exemptions do need the commission's buy-in. It's the only exemption that a wetland enforcement officer cannot approve on his own. All the other exemptions can be approved. He did give us a form that DEP uses, DEP uses, which was good, and we've adopted that form. It's now on our website for any as-of-right use to use. The inquiry form will still be used for people who want to inquire whether they need a permit or not. But I'm surprised Joe's not here because what I wanted to hear from Joe is where exactly on his properties are going to do this. I just like to know, I don't want to willy-nilly say it's an exemption when I don't have a clear understanding of where on the property it's going to be done to make sure that he understands that the exemption doesn't give a right to interfere with water flow. Although I don't know anybody who plant, plants in a stream, but you never know. But Joe's not here, I guess, huh?
So, Russ, I doubt he's going to be planting anything until next spring, so couldn't we just push this off until next month?
I guess we have to because I have, I'd like to see a map. And if Julie, you could give Karen a note to ask Joe for a map, just not a survey drawing, but a map just showing where exactly this would take place.
Russ, it's John. Do you want me to just call him tomorrow and have him flag it, mark it out?
To who?
I can call him tomorrow and have him mark it out if you like, so.
Yeah, he needs to know. We, we can't just give a carte blanche exemption.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure, yeah.
Yeah, with the forecast, John, make sure he puts some tall stakes.
Like a gate foot pulse.
Oh, geez.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to the Woods Roxbury LLC. Could you put that back, Julie? Because I gotta, I have to do something here.
The agenda?
The, the agenda? The original agenda did not include the two oh-three North Street, also noted as parcel B, on the original agenda. And that's what got the application pulled because that was not on the public hearing notice. So to correct that, we've corrected the agenda to show that it's two parcels that are now impacted by this proposed regulated activity associated with residential six lot subdivision. I need a vote from the commission to approve this corrected agenda. So I'll look for a motion to approve the corrected agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Russ, I'll step down from this.
Okay.
Russ, this is, Russ, this is Drew. I do have a question. I'm just looking at the agenda and I, it just says two oh-six North Street Residential Six Lot. You're talking about the agenda, right? Not the application?
No, the agenda. When you change an agenda when it, when it's been issued, you have to vote to fix that, to correct. You gotta vote to make that change.
I guess, I guess I don't see where the reference is to the other side of the road.
It's two oh, two oh-three. Oh, you must have the other agenda.
Okay.
The corrected agenda added two oh-three North Street.
Okay. Yeah, it's not on the version I'm looking at. Okay.
Okay.
Yep, I'm good. So if it's come two oh-three, okay, go ahead.
So go ahead. I have a, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I think I already seconded it, didn't I?
Yes.
If you didn't, you did. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Now, John, are you going to step down from this application?
Yes.
All right, it's still, it still leaves me, Rob, Drew, and Andy, how could I forget Andy? To begin, I just want to, this is a brand new application, okay? So we have to treat it as a brand new application. We're going to have to do a site walk. We're going to have to do everything like it never came in. So with that, I'm going to state again, I don't have a conflict of interest because I am acquaintances with Jill and Raj. I met them after we denied the application to the original twelve lot or eleven lot subdivision. After the appeal period was over and I met them and talked about why it was denied. And, and we got to be acquaintances because of, quite frankly, our love of animals, my love of goats, and Jill has five goats. And also that Jill, I, I tried to get this property preserved by the land trust. And I tried to work between the town, the Roxbury Land Trust, the Leontonog, which is another name now, and unfortunately that didn't work out. And that's how I got to know Jill and Raj. To be frank with you, knowing me, Jill and Raj knowing me, hasn't helped them a bit on this application. They'd be better off if they didn't know me because I did vote to deny the first one. And I did as chairman, you know, Rob brought up that there was a problem with using the other lot and, and, and that happened. So I don't have a conflict of interest, and that's all that needs to be said about this. So with that, I'm staying on. And we'll move on to the application. So I have some questions for the applicant before we begin a presentation as to what the application is. So my questions are, is this the exact same plan that was presented during the public hearing where it had to be then pulled because of a notice issue, public notice issue? Where that public notice did not mention the, the lot across the way. And just to remind everybody, there's a detention basin across the street that wasn't on the original plans. It had to be put on the original plans to respond to our consultants request that a different method be used to calculate stormwater calculations. And doing those calculations, the applicant had to enlarge what was a plunge plume into a detention basin. And he had to do that on a different lot. The town is not at fault here. I want that on the record because the town was not aware that the application now moved to a different lot, which required a different public hearing notice. We weren't aware of that until the meeting of the public hearing. And Rob Horgan so brilliantly brought up, how could we approve something that's on another parcel? And it was determined that the public hearing notice did not include the other parcel. And our, another brilliant person, our attorney, Gail McTaggart, brought up that there were court cases that kind of said this, this isn't going to fly. And I'm glad the applicant pulled the application and we didn't have to go to court to argue that. So my question to the applicant, is this the same application as the application before it was pulled? And if not, what changes have been made?
Mr. Chairman? Mister, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
For the record, it's Chris Smith, and I'm here this evening on behalf of the owner applicant. And I'm a land use attorney with law firm Walter and Pearson LLC. And I think that, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, everyone anticipates that there will be a public hearing concerning this application. And I, so I want to be, I think we should be very brief until we have that hearing and are able to present the application. But I was going to say in my very brief comments that I planned, Mr. Chairman, the first comment that I was going to make is direct response to your question. And yes, this is the same proposal that was pending before the commission when we withdrew it, when the notice issues were first brought up and the comments and alleged issues concerning the notice were brought up. So we did, as you're well aware, my client did just refile this last week including the reference to two oh-three North Street, which is the property located across the street that was referred to in the original plans as parcel B. It now has a street designation. And, and I would, since this is essentially, this is the same application again that was pending before the commission. And that it's an iteration of a long process that started with a prior application for eleven or twelve lots, depending upon how you count them up. I would respectfully, on behalf of my client, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, respectfully request that my client not have to, that there be a waiver of the fees, the filing fees, since this again is the same application. My client has already paid substantial amount of money to have a third-party consultant review the plan that's before you this evening. And we'll address those specifics during the public hearing. The last two items that I would, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Well, should we go one by one?
You're, you're the chairman. You're in charge.
We'll go one by one. Section three-three of the town ordinance on their waivers doesn't allow us to do waivers unless it's a bona fide nonprofit tax organization, which is not this. Under section twenty-two of our regulations, the applicant has to petition that to the commission to waiver, reduce, or allow to delay payment of fees in writing. So I don't have that in writing. But just before you go through that process, the only way we could do that is if the activity applied for would clearly result in a substantial public benefit. And I don't know that you could show that. Or based on a particular facts of an application, the application fee is clearly excessive in relation to the cost of the town for reviewing and processing the application. Unfortunately, this application has been very costly to the town, not only in the, in the time that our our people, our staff at town hall have spent, and a lot of that's due to COVID, but also in our attorney fees. So you could go ahead and ask in writing, but under our regulations, we can't approve it without that in writing. And if you want to go forward, go ahead, but I suggest you look at section twenty-two of our regs and determine for yourself whether the commission legally could do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll follow up with my client on that, discuss it.
Next?
I was waiting. I thought you might have questions. What we would respectfully request, and this is provided in the application, is that the records from the prior two applications be included with this process. And then finally, I believe that the only item that the commission may have this evening with regard to the application, without getting into the merits of it, is whether there's a significant impact. And I just would respectfully suggest that the commission found with the last application, and again, this is the same application, essentially the same application that was pending before you when it was withdrawn. There's still no direct impacts. There's no additional disturbance in the upland review area. And would respectfully request that there hasn't been any substantial change and that the commission make that same finding. But as to the merits of the application, Mr. Chairman, we do look forward to presenting the application and the regulated activities, addressing the regulated activities associated with this six lot subdivision to the commission at the public hearing to be scheduled by the commission. So thank you.
Yep. Chris, what was your first one? I'm sorry. I missed the first one. Not the significant activity, but the one before that.
With the return of record, with the records, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Anybody have questions from the commission on that? Chris, why would you want to do that? Because you have a whole new application. I would think it'd be cleaner if we just start it that way, but.
Well, I think that the, you do have a new application, Mr. Chairman, but I think having the records from the prior applications that certainly outline and provide a clean, a nice record of the efforts that my client has made and going through the different iterations of a proposed development of this property, getting down, going from a twelve lot subdivision to a the six lots that's before you, and then the modifications that were done to the proposal that was submitted to you prior application. So having, having all that before you, and if indeed there were to be a review in court that, and if we were to, quite frankly, within the commission's that, and if we were to, quite frankly, within the commission's wisdom, if we were to obtain an approval, I think it would be to our benefit, my, my client's benefit to have that as part of the record with this application that we could refer a court to as a basis for the, again, the, the process that my client has gone through to get to this point. As you indicated, it has been a very long and lengthy and process. And again, there's been quite a number of changes that are the result of everybody's efforts. Everybody who's been involved, including, including opposition. So I think having that there will be to, to everyone's benefit. And we could go forward with this new application and address it. Again, everybody on this commission is familiar with it and, and that's, that's the thought process behind that, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission.
Okay, anybody on the commission have any issue with that?
Russ, it's Drew. Yeah, I wasn't that involved in the previous evolution. And so now essentially.
You were lucky.
Well, essentially we're incorporating everything from the past then, so it's kind of.
That's right.
Like having a new application.
No, well, we have a new application. It doesn't really affect you, Drew, because you're going to be involved now on this where you weren't before. But it doesn't affect you because everything you hear from this point forward is what you're voting on. What Attorney Smith is asking for is that we include the record from before, as he said, to, to show how the process changed. I don't have a problem with it, I don't know if anybody else does.
I do not, Russ, have a problem with it.
So.
May I ask a question?
Go ahead, Gail.
Chris, I was just wondering whether that's going to include, we don't have transcripts of all the, of all the hearings. We have records that are audio on the website of those. So are you, are you talking only about submissions? Or do you also want all of the recordings of the, of the hearings included?
And Attorney McTaggart, I think if the, if the audios are, continue to be made available on the, through the website, that we would have that there. As, as everyone is well aware, if an appeal is not taken, transcripts would not have to be made. But if the audios are available from those, from those various hearings and all the material, and if they could be added to the website, it's, it sounds like it's all there. It's just a matter of including it, then I, I think that's all we would need at this point in time. I don't think transcripts have to be prepared in light of the fact that the audio is readily available due to COVID. Otherwise we wouldn't have that, we'd have cassette tapes or whatever. But if it's available on the website, I think we should be fine with that. And it's subject to your thoughts as well, Attorney McTaggart.
Thank you, I was, I was just trying to make clear what we were including. And I was trying to see if it could be streamlined in any way because it's a substantial record. Because you're talking about both the first hearing and the second hearing, and then we'll have this record. Am I, am I correct?
Yes, Attorney McTaggart. And again, if, if it sounds like everything's already there, it's just a matter of compiling it and having it available as part of this record if somebody wanted to review it. And again, the transcripts, transcripts of anything would not have to be prepared unless there were an appeal anyways. Hard copies.
Gail, what's your recommendation to the commission on this?
I think that, I think they have a right to put it in. So I don't think, I don't, I don't think there's a, any reason why we wouldn't allow that, why you wouldn't allow that. It's just a huge record that's coming in, so it's going to become voluminous. People that didn't attend those hearings and read all of what was put in before will need to do that. But, but there's no, there's no legal reason not to put it in.
And it's my understanding that quite a bit of the, fair amount of the material that's already been submitted relative to those, the prior records. And I, and I believe, and as you know, I came in late in the second application process. But it's my understanding that the, during the beginning of the second application process, it was requested that the record from the first hearing, the first application be included. Because again, there was a lot of, there was quite a bit of overlap with some of the material, even though each application has stood on its own, as, as this one will. But, but it would probably make for a cleaner overall record, again, if there were to be a challenge, one way or the other, to, to a decision by the commission.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve the request of Attorney Smith to include the record before. So to make it clear, Chris, that's the record not only of the application that was pulled recently, but the application for the 11 or 12 lot subdivision that was denied?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, please.
So I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Russ, it's Drew, I would vote no.
Okay, thank you, Drew.
Yep.
So passes three to one.
Thank you.
Four, one, two, three, four to one. Okay, significant activity. Under our regulations, and we don't have to do this at this meeting, it could be the next. As you all know, we have to determine whether this is a significant activity in accord, in accordance with the definition in our regulations. Significant activity is any activity that has a potential, potential to cause harm. Feelings by the commission, whether this, look, we all know we're going to have a public hearing. So whether it's a public hearing in the public interest, which obviously there's a public interest and we wouldn't be doing the public of Roxbury any favors by not having a public hearing. And we will, I think, I think it, I think you all, well, I shouldn't say, I don't know what you think. But I think it's in the best interest of the public that we have a public hearing. So. Get the cat out of the way. Stop it. So, um, two ways to have a hearing in our regulations. Either we call it a significant act, activity, or we do it in the public interest. And if we find neither, then we don't, we don't have a public hearing. So what does everybody feel as Attorney Smith asked, you know, what do we feel about this being a significant activity?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And, and I apologize, and I apologize for interrupting while you were inquiring with the commission. But you raise a point that the, since you're probably going to have a public hearing in the public interest, which is required, is provided by the statute, I'm very familiar with that provision in particular, that the significant, whether it's significant impact or not, can certainly be taken up at the beginning of the public hearing if the commission were to choose so. Because that, that's the only distinction it makes relative to the hearing. If you're going to have a hearing anyways, then, then it's actually a moot point for this evening. If, if the chair would like to take that up at the, again, at the public hearing to be scheduled by the commission.
We'll, we'll decide that. So go ahead.
Just wanted to offer that.
Go ahead. Rob, what do you feel? You want to make this decision now, you want to wait, we have to do a site walk? We've all seen the site, we're all very familiar with the plans. It's part of the record now. What would you, what would your opinion be, Rob?
My opinion based on what, I mean, can my opinion be based on what was presented at the last public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and the application is before you, which has been stated on the record, has not changed from the last public hearing.
Okay, well, so I, I think based on the evidence that was presented by our consultant and the intervenors, that I would consider this does have the potential to impact the wetlands.
Okay, so you would vote for significant activity?
Yes.
Andy? You're muted.
Yep, just noticed that. I have to agree with Rob based on everything that went before, that there is the potential for this to have an impact on the wetlands. And I would also say that there is a significant public interest in this based on public interest that we've seen. So yes, I would be in favor of a hearing.
Okay, Drew?
Yeah, I agree with, with both Rob and Andy.
Okay, so the commission has determined that this is a significant activity. And as such, requires a public hearing. And as such, requires the applicant to prove there's no other feasible and prudent alternative. Because in the presence of a public hearing under a significant activity, the commission cannot approve an application where a feasible and prudent alternative exists. So with that, what date would we like to set the public hearing for? I do not want to set it on a regular meeting night. I think that's very stressful for all of us. The regular meeting in January is scheduled for the 26th? I'm thinking the 19th?
I think that's a board of finance meeting, Russ.
Yeah, it's a Tuesday night, Andy, is that?
Yeah, that's a problem.
How about the 12th?
12th is fine.
Andy?
Yes, the 12th is fine.
No, I mean, Drew, I'm sorry, Drew.
Yeah, 12th is all right.
Yep, Drew, you're in this to the end, right? You could, you could stick with us? Because I know you go away and your business.
Yeah, I don't have any schedule, you know, the next couple of months, but I.
Okay, and if you miss a meeting, it's okay, as long as you watch the tape, which is a lot easier with COVID. So as long as you watch the tape, you, you, you could be, you could stick with this.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Smith.
And I know, I know we ran into this the last time, but I, and I apologize. But I do have a, a conflict that evening that was scheduled over a month ago, so, and I apologize for that.
The 13th?
And I would like to be there.
Yeah, of course, the 13th, that's a Wednesday?
That's, that's good for me. I'm sorry, but I'll be.
Drew, are you good on the 13th?
Um, yep.
Rob, you good?
I'm good.
Andy?
Yep, that's good.
All right, we will schedule a public hearing on January 13th, 7:00 PM on Zoom.
Thank you very much, and we'll see you then. Have nice holidays and stay safe, thank you.
Mark, I have one question. Mark.
Yes, yes, sir.
Could you put up on the screen this detention basin across the street at 203?
Somebody gives me the screen.
Plan up.
The screen is shared. The only map I have available right now is I want to say what was referred to as C4.
Put that up.
Where's that basin, Mark?
So the basin, Mr. Chairman, is, if you see where the words North Street is?
Yes.
Right there, it's right to the left of it.
Okay. Butt up against the wetlands, if I see.
No, it's, 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 it's in the, it's, the upland review area is in the white green.
Mark, if, Mr. Chairman, with, it's Chris Smith, with all due respect, I would prefer not to save this for the public hearing if we can.
Chris, Chris, I run the meeting and the commission's needs to know this to, to go out on the sidewalk where to look.
Okay, I apologize, thank you.
Yeah.
Mark, will this be staked out?
I, I can, we can give you a flags out there where that is. There's test pits that are pretty evident out there where they were. But with the two feet of snow coming, I'm not so sure you're going to find them. So, but we can definitely. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Could you stake it tomorrow with two foot long stakes? Or three foot?
I, I've got a lot of things going on tomorrow, but if I have to, I know where this is. So I can pretty much get, get some flags out there. I can put some flags out there.
It'd be helpful because we need to see it. If we don't see it, we're going to have to delay it again. Because I, I need to look at this because this came up in a meeting and we never saw this during a site walk.
So we can, I'll, I'll try to get somebody out there to, we'll flag it up.
All right, so commission members, before the public hearing on the 13th, I need you all to go out there, no more than two, to take a look at this plan. And you need to rewalk everything, you can't just say, yeah, I've been up there. And Rob, RJ would love to see you again. So if you, you and I want to go, I'll, I'll plan that with you. But Andy, you and Drew, or, you know, plan something and make sure it's only two of you. I, I think we all know the site, so we don't need the engineer to attend. That way there's no questions asked and we just go look. And the purpose is so you become re-familiar with the site, it's been many months. And that you come back to the next meeting with questions, if you have any, okay? Understood, everybody?
Yep, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mark and, and Chris, thank you very much, we'll see you on the 13th.
Will do.
Well, happy holidays, New Year.
Happy holidays to all of you.
Yep. And Julie, Julie, make sure in the, in the public hearing notice that Karen knows to give it to Gail to review before it goes to the paper or out to the public. Need to make sure both parcels are on there.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm making a note of that.
Okay, what's next? Before we go, Marjorie, I see you're on, do you have any comments? Is there any, is there an intervenor status request or, I don't want to leave you out.
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Chairman. I did email a verified petition for intervention to Karen Eddy this afternoon. So there is a, an intervenor request and Merry Christmas.
Yes, okay, she didn't send that to me and I apologize. The commission has to approve intervenor status. The intervenor has to show holding, like they have an interest. And I think it's pretty clear that they have an interest. So I'll make a motion to approve, is it, Marjorie, is it Clorax? I, I always get the name of the company wrong.
Mr. Chairman, it's Corax Corporation.
Clorax Corporation has asked to intervene, I make a motion to approve them as intervenors.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Gail, I have a question. When somebody becomes an intervenor, isn't it up to the applicant to send all stuff directly to the intervenor and not through the town?
Yes, it should be, but we want to keep track of everything that is part of the application. So it's helpful for the applicant to send everything to the intervenor and the intervenor to send their submissions to the applicant. But we'd also want to make sure that the town's getting, keeping track of all that.
But that could be done nowadays with technology, could be done all at once.
Yeah, it could be done all at once.
Whatever they send to Karen, they have to send to Marjorie.
Right, they could just copy every.
Right, and Marjorie has to do the same and send everything to Chris, right?
Yeah, that's fine, Marjorie, are you fine with that?
Absolutely, thank you.
I, it, because we're a small town and Karen's not always in, it holds up getting information to different parties. And I, I want that, I would like that not to happen this time around. Okay?
Very well, thank you.
With that, we'll move on. I think there's a, next is the notice of violation. John, I, I can't see the. Did I miss somebody? No, we'll start with enforcement, notice of violation, Hasselton Anderson, 220 Painter Hill Road, unauthorized activity within the wetland buffer zone.
And I'm back on for this.
And I'm back on for this, Russ.
Okay, John's back on. Drew, you're still on, you're on for Sue, so you're still.
I, I will step down from this, Russ.
Okay, Rob's gonna step down. Anybody else? Okay, to clarify some administrative issues. We took this, uh, notice of violation up at the last meeting. Um, which was a special meeting. It was a special meeting because we, we moved the meeting up a month or up a week because of the public hearing. And you cannot add things on to the, uh, agenda at a special meeting. And we did add on the notice of violation at that meeting, which I thought we had the right to do because it's a violation, but unfortunately, the courts see different, or somebody sees different. Um, therefore, everything we talked about that meeting, including the thousand dollar fine, is null and void, doesn't exist. And now we take this up at this meeting, uh, where after the, the first notice of violation was because they cleared all around a pond without a permit. And Shane, being the contractor, said he didn't realize he needed the permit and neither did the homeowner or the owner of the property claimed they didn't know they needed the permit. However, it was clearing that seemed, uh, pretty intense. Therefore, the commission voted to have a thousand dollar fine attached to the NOV and requested that a mitigation plan be submitted. After that happened, uh, John, would you explain what happened after that?
Oh, certainly, that's John Cody. Uh, I was driving by up Painter Hill and I noticed that there was a brand new lawn that was installed right next to the driveway, which is approximately, I would say 50 feet at the most away from where the tree cutting was done adjacent or basically on top of the pond itself. In addition to that, to the south side, I think of the house, there was, um, selective cutting. It wasn't clear cut, but there was a, a significant number of trees and, and and landscape maintenance that was done to a wooded area.
And this is fif- 15 feet from the wetland?
No, 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 this is, this is actually, this would be in the, in the buffer zone where the tree, tree cutting was done.
Alright, how, how close to a wetland in a buffer zone?
Uh, wetland would prob- I mean, I would have to guess at that, uh, stream downgrade probably. Uh, depends, it was in select, it was a, a wandering area where it was cut. So I mean, the closest I would say 60, um.
Okay.
And, you know.
So it's in the, it's in the buffer zone.
Oh, yeah, definitely. The house is almost touching the, the buffer that side.
Okay. Um, so they did more cutting within a regulated area without a permit after they were told, um, after they were issued a notice of violation for cutting in a regulated area without a permit, right?
Uh, that probably would not have been a concern if it was addressed properly. The thing that set that off was the brand new lawn that was put in right, you know, right, almost 30, no, 50 feet away from the pond itself.
Okay. Commission?
Um, John, was that new lawn put in? What was there prior to the new lawn? Was it an effort to stabilize an issue or was it something else?
Uh, you know, it was hard to tell because it was completely, it was regraded, new soil, hay, um, seeded. It, it was a brand new lawn put in there.
What was it before it was a lawn?
It was a lawn, but it's hard to tell. Yeah, um, Shane could probably answer that better than I can, how much fill or how much topsoil was brought into that area.
I, I did not do the lawn installation. That was not my work. I, um, and all the tree cutting we talked about earlier, that was all done before, uh, we had our meeting. We started up the hill at the edge of the far end of the property and worked our way down towards the house. So all of that work was done in an area that we thought was easily 100 feet from the pond. We didn't know it was, had anything to do with wetlands. There was no indication. There was no skunk cabbage, there was no water. Just walking through, I would never have guessed that it was wetlands with the fields and the position of the area. So that was done before the pond area.
Alright, and you didn't put the lawn in?
No.
So we.
That was, that was a, um, a pile of soil that must have been put there from the construction. And there were stumps in that area.
Okay.
There was no construction on that site.
No, no, when they originally did the house.
Okay, well, that, because that's a significant area that was regraded and reseeded. It wasn't a small, little, small pile here quite a minute.
But, and that regrading and reseeding happened after the pond?
Definitely, yes, 110.
After, okay.
And there was tree cutting that was done also on the back. There's some photographs that I got of a Kubota tractor with all the fresh wood and the stumps and all that stuff.
Uh, we were moving the firewood. The wood that was cut, we were just picking up the firewood lengths and stacking them. If you look up there now, it's all stacked in long piles.
Okay, I've got photographs of the, the pond and what was above it, so it's whatever.
Um, is that online so we could see it or no? Not PDFed?
I don't believe it is.
Yeah, okay. So Brian, you're, you're a representative for, um, for the good doctor there?
Yes, that's right.
And what's going on there? What's the plan? That's my concern is if, if this keeps going on, no permit to this day has been submitted. What, what are they doing? What's, what's the big plan? What's the big picture?
Well, these were improvements that the homeowner wanted to do. I sat down with the owner and, uh, went over the list of things he wanted to do on the property. And I put together a proposed site improvement plan, which I did submit. It should be online.
When did you submit it?
Um, I emailed that yesterday to, uh, John Cody. It's on, it's on here someplace, because I saw it.
Yeah, anything that comes to me, I forward to Karen as soon as, I think, uh, this morning at 6:30 this morning, I forwarded that to her.
It, it is, it is on the, on the site here.
For us to get it online on the same day puts us in a bad position.
Well, it's, it's on there right now.
Karen included it in her email this afternoon.
It's, it's right there.
Alright, Brian, explain to us what's going on. What's the big plan?
Okay, there's, it, it actually encompasses two different properties of the same ownership. Um, most of the work itself was done on the, the 220 Painter Hill Road property. But there's an adjacent property, um, 238 Painter Hill Road, which has an adjacent pond which drains into the one on 220. So if you look at the plan, that shows, um, the two properties, the two ponds. Um, I sat down with the owner and asked him, you know, what he wanted to do in terms of improvements. So I described those on this plan of what he would like to do. Um, which would be basically things that are in regulated area. Uh, those things include to dredge the bottom of both ponds.
Is, what's the red line?
Red line is the, um, uh, the upland 100 foot upland setback.
Alright, and the blue line is actual wetland?
Blue line is the proposed limited disturbance.
Okay.
So I've, I've demarcated where the, the ponds are, the wetlands are, the regulated areas in red. Uh, we talked about the activities that would be done and how much area that would cover. So the, the blue dash line is like the limited disturbance. Um, it's along the side of some piping.
The owner before this started happening or this happened after?
I, I met with the owner after.
Okay, the notice of violation.
Problem was noticed. Went up and saw the, the cutting around the pond on 220. Um, basically, it looked like everything was cut down flush. It wasn't any, um, any stumps dug out or anything of that sort. Didn't seem like there was any, uh, erosion problems. Pretty stable. They just did a flush cut of what was there, which looked like mostly invasive, uh, plants, bushes, trees, things like that that were non-native.
How do we know they were invasive if they were all cut down?
Well, there's still, there's still, um, the same kind of vegetation around the other sides of the pond. Towards the roadside that weren't cut. So there's, there's plenty of invasives in that area. Just looks like it probably surrounded the entire pond. I looked on Google Earth to kind of see what it looked like previously. It looked like about the same type of vegetation all the way around previously.
Okay, okay, fair enough.
So, um, the owner would like to remove.
What's the plan? Just removes, remove evasives and then what? Uh, I guess Sam is here for that.
Yeah. Uh, for the record, Sam Saban, um, yeah, I met with the owner last Thursday. Um, he had, um, called, uh, after the, he had been issued the violation to develop a restoration plan. Um, that, um, we would, uh, incorporate a, uh, uh, the, the planting aspect of the mitigation plan to stabilize what was cut. Um, I, I'll agree with Brian from all, you know, intents and purposes with, based on what was on the other side of the pond and just the root massing, um, it was mostly all invasive, so the whole.
What kind, Sam?
I, I sent, uh, uh, which would be, um, native shrubs, um, wetland, uh, conservation and, uh, uh, meadow mix and, uh, no mo fescue.
Alright, Sam, Sam? What kind of evasives were there?
Uh, there's barberry, uh, bittersweet, uh, multiple rose. Uh, that is all actually outlined in, um, Brian's plans here as well.
Yeah, I do list those on the, on my plan. Russian olive also is quite a bit of Russian olive in that area.
There, there are a few, uh.
What about that Japanese, uh, wartna or whatever that is?
Not weed. I didn't see any not weed in there.
Thank God, because you make it worse by cutting it like they did. You make it worse.
Stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
There are a few more established trees along the roadside. Um, which, um, I recommend that we, we, we preserve, obviously, but, um, there are, you know, significant invasives on the, on the, on the roadside as well that, um, I, I would like to include, uh, shrub planting as, as well, but I have to review that with the owner.
Alright, so because we didn't know anything that's going on, it's hard to figure out. So a house is already there, it's already built, nothing going on with the house, right?
That's right, nothing with the house.
And, and there was a barn that was taken down and it's gonna be put back up, right?
Yeah, on the, on the 238 property, the big barn, that's out of regulated area.
Okay, so that doesn't, that doesn't really affect wetlands. So the plan was, let's clear this, because it looks like, uh, it looks like crap, okay? Um, let's clear it and plant natural things there instead of invasive, allowing it to just, I know Russian olive, it's a, I battle it all the time in my wetland projects. Um, so, and that's the plan, pretty much, right? There's nothing else going on here like, uh, you know, next thing we want to do is build a cabin on the pond and you know, how, how we have creep of people do one thing and then the next day, you know, there's another thing and it never ends.
No, yeah, um, when I met with, uh, the owner, he, he made it very clear that he just, just wanted to do this just to, to improve the, the, you know, aesthetic quality of the pond and get rid of the invasives for, you know, better habitat. I mean, it is a man-made pond, but at the same time, it, it could be much improved by just some, you know, native wet, native wetland and upland plants.
Alright, Sam, from a environmental point of view, um, is your plan better than what was there?
Um, I would suggest yes, because we're, the, the intention is to control the invasives. Um, they, I mean, invasives do provide bird habitat, but they tend to suffocate any oth- other type of ecological benefits, so. Um, there, there is an outlet structure, no- nothing else about the pond is changing besides the dredging that's on Brian's plan and the planting.
So Brian, they're gonna dredge the ponds?
Yeah, just take the, the muck out of the bottom.
Okay.
I don't think those have been dredged in probably 50 plus years.
Yeah, long time. So how about the outlet structure? Is that okay?
Well, there's, there's two ponds that are connected by a swale.
Right.
The pond on number 238 goes downhill and into the pond on 220. Yellow structure is a pipe that goes into a catch basin under the road, which has been there for a long, long time. Um, there's a pretty small drainage area that goes into these two ponds. Must be springs underneath those. Because there's not extensive amount of wetland area or drainage area that goes into these. So they must be, uh, you know, spring-fed ponds. Probably for, for cattle back in the day.
Or, or, or a high water table.
Well, that's, yeah, that would contribute also.
High water table there, but, so, but you're okay with the outlet structure?
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with that. There's no indication it's ever been breached or overloaded. Um, there's really no other water courses that run into either one of these ponds. So if you look at the drainage area, there's not a lot of, uh, area contributing to the flow into these ponds.
Okay, anybody else on the commission? Rob? What's your thoughts on this?
Russ, I have stepped down from this.
Oh, never mind, Rob. Uh, Drew?
Yeah, it seems like the, the wetland issues are, are, are fine. Um, you know, with the lawn, if it's, if the intent is to, you know, prevent runoff and all of that, then, um, I, I don't have a problem with that. I also thought it was just a field there anyways. I haven't really visited the site. I just remember driving by and not.
Yeah, we all need to go look at it, by the way. We all need to go look at it. And what I want you to do is look at it, because at the next meeting, we have to determine what the fine, if there is a fine, what it may be. Uh, we did assess a thousand dollar fine first time around, but that's no good, because, uh, because, uh, we had it at a special meeting, so we start over. Let's go look at it. Uh, Brian, is the owner okay with us, uh, one by one, just driving by and looking at it so we could determine?
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure you would be. There's the driveway for 220. You can drive right up into the driveway. You're right there. You know, it's important to see the land, to get an idea of what's there.
Okay, if there is a problem, let us know, because.
No, I know you have to take a look at it and it's.
Yeah, we have to look at it. If he doesn't allow us to look at it, then we make a decision based on not looking at it.
No, I think the owner would like to cooperate.
Tomorrow.
Right, I'd like the owner to, you know, I know the owner wants to cooperate and get this situation resolved. Um, I recommended a after-the-fact application. Go along with this plan and Sam's planting plan to kind of complete the, uh, paperwork.
Alright, and a $350 after the fact fee?
A little, it's a bigger fee.
Okay, alright, as long as that's been submitted, we'll take that into consideration. Um, yeah, I'm gonna go tomorrow before, before I can't see a darn thing.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
For months.
If anybody else can make it, I think be a great idea. And, uh, I, I thank the owner for cooperating and coming in with two excellent professionals, um, to help us better understand this. I know we, we, sometimes I, I can't speak, because the rest of you guys are nice people. I tend to be a little, uh, a little, you know, I care about the wetlands and I don't like it when people, um, do things that I feel they should know about, but okay. I, I'm a fair guy. I'm willing to go look at it, assess what the damage really is. And if there really isn't any damage and this is a better situation and the only mistake was not getting a permit, then I'm, I'm willing not to have a fine. Just the $350 after the fact fee, which is not a fine. Uh, just for everybody, just so the history's there. We have that because we decided it was better to have an after-the-fact fee, even if people did things not knowing, because for people who took the time to know, shouldn't be charged the same fee. That's, that's all that's about. Everybody agree? Anybody have any comments? I, I looked at Sam's plan. I looked at Brian's plan. I don't know if the rest of you had a chance. But I think they're good plans. Alright, are we good?
Sounds good.
Alright. So don't forget, you gotta get to the woods. Um, hopefully you get to the woods tomorrow. Otherwise, you're gonna be trouncing through two feet of snow, which might be fun. Um, and then try to get to this pond and our next meeting is the regular meeting of the 26th. But don't, that's at 7:30. The public hearing is 7 o'clock. But don't, that's at 7:30. The public hearing is 7 o'clock on the 13th, and that's a Wednesday. Okay? A motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
See, thanks, everybody. We'll see you all soon, I hope.
Thank you.
Good night.
Alright.